Alright, there's no other discussion, all those in favor? Agenda item number six, discuss change order number three to Ludlow's contract for South Street, water transmission main improvements and road reconstruction project. This change order will extend the substantial completion date to six twenty-three twenty-three and the final completion date to nine eighteen twenty-three. There's no contract value increase associated with this change order. The minor costs associated with winter shutdown, structure adjustments on asphalt shimmying, will be covered by an allowance on the existing contract. Entertain a motion to recommend approval of this change order. Okay, go ahead Matt.
Sure, the biggest thing driving the delay that's... So they're currently, they're currently still excavating the road, I believe. I don't believe they're a hundred percent done with the drainage yet. The, the biggest reason why excavations aren't taking place so late in the year was they had a valve that they were supposed to, it was, I believe it was about three months, delivered about three months later than was expected, and put off the, the activation of the, of the water mains. Because there's not enough time for a ninety day settlement period, we've opted to push their road reconstruction, road reconstruction into twenty twenty-three to allow it to settle over the winter before completing the project. As, as is mentioned in the agenda item, there's no contract value increase associated with it. There will be some minor costs, less than twenty thousand dollars, and they'll be covered under allowance, under the existing contract.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Dow.
What's the allowance?
Councilor Dow.
How much is the allowance?
How much is the allowance? I believe it was either eighty thousand or a hundred thousand dollars.
Should I apply maybe for material increase next year?
It could, it could be. If, for asphalt costs, if they were to pavement this year, it'd probably be a similar, a similar price adjustment.
Yeah, two questions. Now, what was the original final completion date when this project started?
I believe that's on the change order. Previously, substantial completion was July thirteenth twenty-two.
Yeah, but I'm looking for final.
Ten twenty-one twenty-two.
Ten of twenty-two?
Yeah, October twenty-first twenty-two.
Okay, and with this, the other question I have is with this, they're saying minimal fees. What, what's the fees that are gonna add up for that, that you said maybe twenty grand? Does that include tie-in bond and everything included in that? Cause they, they're doing oversight on that project?
They're doing oversight, but if they're, if they're not working, then they're not out there. This shouldn't increase the overall time by, except by a very small amount that Ludlow is on site. It'll just push their work into the next year.
They were pushing it off almost a whole nother year. Their original final completion date was supposed to be ten of twenty-two, now it's gonna be nine of twenty-three. So that means tie-in bond's gonna be on that job site for a whole nother year. Am I...
Yeah.
So there's fees to deal with that.
Ludlow, there's no, I mean, the overall additional cost to Lud, for Ludlow's work is going to be less than ten thousand dollars, and that's all just some, uh, structure adjustments to, to, uh, to make the road pliable and, um, and shimming the asphalt so that we have a serviceable road throughout the winter. Those are the only two items that Ludlow's gonna be out on the project for longer.
Okay.
Otherwise, there would be additional cost increases because they would be out there for longer and that they want, they still wanna get this job done with as, as little labor as possible, like, like any contractor would.
He answered the question, okay?
So I drove down South Street on that project, and there's lines on the side of the road that say ER. To me, that's a road, right? Why are we narrowing South Street?
Uh, it's not being narrowed as far as I know.
If you look at those lines on the road, you're narrowing the road by almost three feet.
Yeah. Okay. I'm, I'm not aware.
I'm just wondering if that's just for the winter, and then when they finish the project, they're going back to the existing width?
Or? I'm not sure, I haven't seen those, those lines marked out, so I can't say what the purpose of them is.
Where that pumping station is, you're seeing down that.
Okay.
Any outside?
Yeah, just, maybe I just will need to, rather not see the road being narrowed.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Councilor Dow.
Quick to Matt, anything else the team has to sign on, on this?
Uh, on the change order?
Yeah.
Just the, just the change order form, that's all.
Alright, so maybe wanna add that as far as signing paperwork?
Those usually, those usually end up, uh, when they put together the town council agenda, I think NOR generally tags that up to everything.
Okay, well, I, the concern that I have is it's always tie-in bond. You always, later on down the road, tie-in bond adds to their expense, and so that's my concern. And that's why I think that if something is done with Ludlow, Ludlow's extending it, maybe something in there that, uh, could be no change order for tie-in bond and increasing cost. That's, that's my only concern. It's happened, just happened recently. We had a job that was extended, there was no cost involved, but, and tie-in bond came back, and there wasn't an increase in cost. That's the only concern, and so I agree with Councilor Dow's concerns. But other than that, I guess we're ready to vote? Got anything else? Alright, all those in favor? Commanders, thank you. Agenda item number seven, discuss change order number one to the contract with Piyapi Construction for Road Improvements, twenty twenty-two, this change order. Change order would add the Millen overlay at Coons and Moon Streets back into the scope of the project for the bid. Alternate number one, price of one hundred and thirty-five, four thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty cents to be funded from the Winter Recovery and Assistance Program. This change order would also add unit cost for gravel and dense graded crushstone, extended the final completion date to May nineteenth twenty twenty-three, and they add milestones for certain work to be completed by the end of the twenty twenty-two paving season. Entertain a motion. Go ahead.
Due to, um, material, uh, unavailability, but primarily, uh, but also, um, delays in my getting an order over to, uh, Mr. Piyapi for this work, and also, uh, delays associated with a tree hearing that I had last week, just to cover our bases on some tree removal on Ellis Road. A number of factors have pushed, uh, construction back, mostly because I don't have enough time to devote to things that I need to do more time to. Um, so overall, this change order increases the contract duration by a hundred and eighty days, but it also sets some milestones, so we're hoping to, uh, get, um, sidewalk and, uh, some, uh, minimal drainage work done on Mechanic and North Streets before winter, uh, to allow those to settle, and then those will be milked and overlaid in the spring. Uh, the, there's a milestone in here for, um, Ellis Road to be at least bindered, but I'm hoping we can, uh, perhaps finish that work, uh, this, this, uh, this winter. And Moon and Coons don't have, uh, don't have milestones, so, uh, it'll be at the contractor's discretion and his favor scheduling availability, whether or not those get milked and overlaid this year or in the spring. It adds, uh, unit prices for gravel, but no, uh, no quantities, so there's no increase in the, uh, contract value. Those items, if used, will have to take the place of unused quantities due to, um, delays and, uh, long lead times on, uh, concrete structures. Uh, particularly, a lot of the drainage work on, uh, Mechanic and North has been scaled well back, so, uh, there are some, some savings there that, uh, things such as gravel, when necessary, can be applied to. The cost of the, uh, the cost of Moon and Coons will, is proposed to be paid out of winter recovery, um, sorry, the RAP, RAP money. Um, and it represents about half of the total RAP money that we have that needs to be spent before the end of fiscal year twenty-three. There, uh, when we put these, when we put this project together, obviously, um, especially Ellis Road, it was done on a, uh, it was done considering a tight budget, uh, so the scope of the project wasn't, it wasn't as, uh, fully designed as, as, um, as you might, uh, want if, if you had, if you, if you had your way, if, if we had our, uh, way, we might, uh, want to design it a little better. Mr. Piyapi has, um, a different vision for the project, and since I won't be here to, to, uh, see my vision through, not that it's the best vision anyway, um, Mr. Piyapi's here to, uh, to make any comments that he'd like to regarding that project.
Okay, um, first of all, I'd like to...
Mr. Piyapi, go ahead.
You know, we do this type of work regularly, this type of roadworks, a small town, we build roads without plans, those kinds of roads. Typically under annual contracts working with the town. Um, so we have a lot of experience with the problems that it run into. And, and I understand how, you know, Matt came up with getting this job off the bid, but there's, there's, there's stuff there that just is gonna have to be done. And, or we won't be able to do the job instead, but that's acceptable to me for starters. Um, and I just kinda wanted to put that on the table before we get started. There hasn't been any, any geotechnical, you know, test holes. I mean, it's, it's very likely there are sections of Ellis Road that get to be excavated totally. The, the, the ditch along the edge of the road is ripped right up against the edge of the pavement, completely non-technical. We need to try to widen to get it at least somewhat of a shoulder so the ditch won't erode the edge of the road. We need to treat the surface of the ditch with a grain, it seems like two percent, with something that doesn't erode, like paved roadway or ripped out. That involves cutting the slope back in places, it involves, you know, I'd have like twenty-something trees. I, I, you know, walked the road, probably like ninety trees minimum. There's, uh, issues like the intersection on the north side of Belford Road. The profile's horrible, you know, there should be some excavation there. There's sections on that side of, on the north side of Belford Road that are extremely narrow for, you know, three or four hundred feet that should, a safe, shouldn't widen two feet in there. It's not done during this project, it's a total missed opportunity, missed opportunity. So I just wanted to make everybody aware, cause if we don't get in the middle of this thing, everyone thinks we're gonna try to pull something. So I don't know if you guys wanna look at more funding, shifting funding, um, doing less better.
Okay. Yoset? Yoset? Okay. So there's a lot to take care of here?
Yeah.
Uh, if you want to respond, it's fine.
I'll just add that, I'll just add that, uh, if you wanted to add funds to this project, the rest of the RAP money is available. Um, I had plans to do line striping throughout town. That could still happen, uh, but I'm not gonna have time to put it together and see it through. Uh, same thing with, um, sidewalk work. Uh, I had planned to, we do have a list of sidewalks, and I plan to put some out to bid and use some RAP money for that, but without me being able to, uh, see that through, then this is a way that we could use RAP money that, uh, would make sure that it's not getting handed back, uh, next year.
Alright.
But it'd have to be done as a separate change order, and I won't be here to see that through.
Okay. Mr. Dow?
I just wanna say, um, Mr. Piyapi is well qualified for this job. I've known him for a long time. He, uh, when he speaks solid, he knows what has to be done. And I would highly recommend giving him what he needs to do the job and do it right. Don't come back after, like he said, that's all I wanna say, thank you.
Alright.
Matt, how much money is, are we okay this, one thirty-four nine? How much money is Ludlow, you said about fifty percent?
The entire, the entire amount is two sixty-six and change, so it's very close to, uh, to the same amount again.
And then, if I can, to Mr. Piyapi. Kim, do you know how much more money you need to do that right?
I have no idea.
No?
We have, we have no...
We haven't done it?
We have no, we have no, I mean, my recommendation would be if you wanna do that road right, and get the rest, and then, you know, get into it, and we can come up with some estimate, go on and estimate and stuff, and then, I don't know if you, you know, if, if we... If we, if it took, maybe it's not as bad as I think, but if it isn't, then maybe we could drop the Coons or, or Moon, put the money, you know, the one road right. If it, if it needs to be given, if it's necessary.
The only other question I have is on, uh, Millen overlay on Coon Street. Are you including in that rice, doing the section on Main Street, mainly Coons?
Uh, no.
With that gas company ripped up, you're not gonna do that?
Into, into Main Street?
Yeah, they went right across Main Street on Coon Street.
We, we had no plan to go into Main Street, uh...
I mean, I think that's kinda asinine, the gas company came in and, I mean, it, it should be included, that was all done on that project when they did the gas site on Main Street, and they did a horrible patch.
That, uh, we have a plan to, um, replace the water main from the main, the existing Main Street project down to the currently in design, uh, project for East, East Main Street. Um, so I wouldn't recommend new paving there, but, uh, if it's, I mean, if it could be incorporated, uh, not minimal additional cost, we may be able to, but, uh, it wasn't, it wasn't included in this estimate.
Do we know when that water line on Main Street's gonna get put in? So I said we do the Main Street, I mean, the town's been suffering enough from, from Luca beating our roads up. I mean, it's part of that whole project, I, I think we should add that right ahead. I mean, that section wasn't paved a really long time ago, Jimmy did it, and, and it held up great, but now Luca just came in and ripped it all apart, and then to leave it till whenever we do the water line? That could be five years. That's just my suggestion feeling on that, if we're gonna be there, may as well do the whole thing or whatever, I mean, for what? Fifty feet?
Okay, Yoset, so the discussion right now is Coons and Moon Street, that's the discussion. Ellis Road, I agree with you, we should let him take a look at it, but we're not gonna be able to do anything on that till he takes a look at it. I don't think we're gonna, we're not gonna decide that tonight, cause it's not on the agenda right now. So I would say get together with the town manager, and let's discuss that further, bring it to the next meeting for us to add it to the agenda. That's what would be my suggestion. What do you think? Sound good?
Yeah.
Alright. Any more discussion on Moon and Coons and Moon Street? Alright, all those in favor? Yoset, thank you. Discuss, uh, item number eight, discuss deer overpopulation in hunting in the town's watershed lands. Entertain a motion to recommend that council votes to allow deer hunting in the town's watershed lands starting on October seventeenth and ending on this February.
Our forestry, uh, consultant has identified, uh, just, um, and this was discussed last year as well, uh, bad damage from deer overrousing, uh, in the watershed area, and, uh, our, our forests are not regenerating the way they should be because, uh, even low priority, low, low preference foods, uh, such as, um, several kinds of, several types of trees that we would like to see, uh, regrowing there are being eaten by the deer and aren't regenerating. Um, we need to, uh, lower the deer population, and this is the only way that we know to do it, so, um... It's called harvested. So we would like to, uh, to open up again, and, um, in the future, I might recommend, uh, not doing it on a year-to-year basis, but just allowing it to, uh, to occur every year, um, until, unless we notice, uh, any reason not to, uh, to, uh, to revisit that, but... Uh, for now, I think during this hunting season, we should open it up, uh, to the public, um, walk-in, walk-out, uh, no vehicles.
Alright, thank you, Councilor Sees.
Um, how many, how much of a response did we get last year when we did it?
So, uh, they don't, it, the people aren't required to, uh, announce their, that they're going there, so it, the water department said from the information they were able to obtain, they, they think approximately six to ten deer were taken last year.
Any, any idea of how many hunters?
Uh, no, but there's, the water, uh, the forestry consultant did say that, according to Mass Wildlife, a healthy deer population should be between six to eight deer per square mile. The deer population in this area far exceeds that recommended density. He doesn't, uh, have an estimate, he didn't provide an estimate for actually how many deer there actually are there, but there are too many.
Yeah, I don't remember saying that's in last year. Uh, so what, what did we do last year for, for advertising it to let people, let it open?
That's a good question, I'm not, that's a good question, I'm not sure, and I think we should try to, uh, to at least get it out on the, uh, maybe the town manager can make a announcement at, uh, town council, maybe we can, uh, put a note, uh, a news item up on the website. I'm not sure if there's any other ways that, uh, that we could, uh, get the word out, but to be open to suggestions.
Any contacts that they, any hunting organizations?
That's a good idea.
Probably the last place. To the Division for Wildlife, they could, they could send it out there.
It's a fantastic opportunity for, for a hunter, if they, it's, it's a great, great, uh, great place to go hunting.
Yoset, Councilor, alright, Mr. Shemir?
Good opportunity for a town to make some money and promote it out there and charge a small fee for a license to hunt on the land, just like the Quabin does, and possibly bring some revenue to Southridge. Just an idea.
If, uh, I think we wanna open it up to as many people as possible and make it as easy to get in there as possible to reduce the population right now as much as possible, but in the future, especially if we start to get it under control, I think we could look at something more like Quabin. Um, I just don't want to place too many barriers to, uh, getting hunters out there and actually getting the work that we need to, to get done, done out there.
We don't want people shy either.
I don't think, we, there wasn't any indication that there were too many hunters last year, so, uh, if we, if we begin to have a issue like that, we could revisit it, but...
Maybe we could have a medicine date on Oak Street.
Are you all set, Mr. Shemir?
Yeah, it was just a, an opportunity.
Very good, very good idea. Councilor Dow?
I don't know if we can do only residents of Southridge? I mean, that's town property? We allow only the residents of Southridge?
I'd be a little forceful, sorry.
I'm done.
So the only thing that I would ask is that, if there are anybody that live up in that area that should at least be informed that there's hunting going on?
Oh, absolutely.
I hope that's getting done, I would think that's the, uh, cause you indicated that nobody even knew they were in there, so... I think we should, somebody should be informed that they're going in there. The town or the residents in the area. Alright, Councilor Sees?
Yeah, I just called up, the state's, uh, website has a participate and control public hunt in Massachusetts listing, which is Mass Wildlife, and they, they include like the Quabin reservoir hunts and various other places that are generally dis-restricted hunting or no hunting at all. So maybe we can get, maybe we can get a list on this particular website, cause I would assume a lot to look at that.
I would just look into what the requirement for coordinating that on the town side is and who's going to be, uh, doing that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, Councilor, are you all set? Are you set? Yeah. Councilor Dow?
I think, uh, Councilor Steve, I think they're doing that in a call of鲁hun something in Boston. And then you have to be on, uh, a draft. If your name come up, then you can have a permit for a certain day, and you have to pay certain fees.
Oh.
And what I understood, they don't wanna eliminate it, they wanna move forward quick if they can to stop eating the trees. So I think we should do a law, that's it.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else? Alright, all those in favor? Commanders, thank you. Agenda item number nine, discuss tie-in bonds proposal to add full-time construction observation services to the West Street Improvement Project, our additional fee not to exceed one hundred and three thousand to be funded from chapter ninety, entertain a motion to recommend approval of this contract.
So moved.
Go ahead, Matt.
Sure, I brought this a few months ago, and it was, uh, voted, uh, down in light of my exit and the rejection of my engineering assistant appointment. I would like to offer this back up to, to, uh, for consideration.
Alright, thank you. Any questions?
No question? And it's a comment, is that I think, I mean, we had this, we kind of had this discussion back when you were over a month or so ago. And, um, I think I was the only one in favor of actually. Um, and I, I still think it's a good idea, cause we do need to have the oversight on that side, especially given what he just said a second ago. Um, so, I'm in favor, but I'm, I am tired of spending a hundred thousand dollars extra on each project to get the oversight. And I would, I would like to have it as much as possible, if we can get it done, to get it in-house and get somebody up and running who actually knows what they're doing to get it, to get this oversight done on a regular basis, but... I also wanna make sure that it's perfected to Main Street, um, get it done right. So I'll support it.
Alright, thank you.
And, uh, construction is starting in about a month, uh, perhaps a bit sooner.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Done? Alright, all those in favor?
I'm done with it.
Just a quick question. So this was voted down at the town council meeting, right?
Uh, subcommittee and council.
Okay, so, procedurally, should this be brought back up by whoever, obviously voted no? Should this be brought back up at the town council meeting by those that voted no?
Voted no.
Well, that's only the same night. No.
It's a different, it's a different, um, agenda, I don't know, because of the funding, the funding source is different, so it's, it makes it different.
That doesn't make it different.
It's the same funding.
It's the same funding source.
It's the same funding source.
It's the same document.
But it was a four to four time, if I recall.
So those four that said no, would have to bring it back up, right?
Those who said yes.
No, cause it failed.
Because it fails, and those that said no, we have to bring it back up.
No.
Well, let's check into that, see how that goes. I thought that it could be brought up at any time. It can't be brought up at the same, we have a parliamentarian right here, Mr. Dow.
He surprised me when I looked over at him.
If it's brought up the same night, the wind's on.
For reconsideration, like somebody that was in the opposition?
But it doesn't stop them from bringing it up at a future meeting, but I could be wrong.
To my knowledge, I didn't know you could bring it, just bring it back up.
There are certain restrictions.
I could be wrong.
Know what they are.
I do, I'm not sure of that.
I don't know either, I just wanna make sure it's done right.
Well, let's, let's make sure of that.
No worries.
Yoset, we'll, uh, vote on it tonight, and then we can have an answer on that. Time for the council meeting, does that sound good?
And I don't know that it, that it matters to the, the rule, uh, that's being discussed, but, I mean, the material conditions that the, that the rejection was based on have changed. So I, I mean, I'll just, I'll leave that.
I respect what you're saying on that, the point of the necessarily, they really care at that point. I respect what you're saying on that, but the point is they're not sure they, they really care at that point.
Well, we'll get an answer on that, councilor Dow.
So it can go back up to discuss it or just to vote on the one or two?
Well, this is just an advisory committee, so no matter how we vote, it's gonna go up to the council to decide. Are we all set? Alright, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion fails, one to four. We'll still vote to the council for a final vote, discussion over, thank you. Agenda item number ten. Discuss transfer of three thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars from account number zero zero one four nine nine dash five one one zero 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 DPW salaries and wages permanent to account number zero zero one four nine nine dash five one eight three zero zero DPW license and stipends to cover increase, license and stipend costs described by the unit, uniting contract.
Motion taken.
Go ahead, Matt.
As, as was right in the item, the new contract has increased stipends and one additional stipend for flail mower licenses and after paying those stipends out, the account was three hundred, about three thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars over budget. And I'm proposing to transfer that out of salary and into license and stipends to cover that deficit.
Okay, any questions? Councilor Steve?
I guess, so clarifies it. So these are all the other stipends have, are, that would be it for this year essentially?
Yes, yeah, they all get paid out at the beginning of this year. They've been the first month, first or second.
Okay. Any other questions? Saying none, all those in favor? Not opposed, thank you. Alright, agenda item number eleven. Discuss change order number one to Westbury Infrastructure Improvement Project for one hundred thousand to add an allowance for paying flaggers when police and traffic constables are unavailable to fill details. Chapter ninety cost estimate for this project already includes two hundred thousand for police details and up to one hundred eight thousand, which will instead be used to pay flood law for flaggers as required. Entertain a motion to recommend.
So moved.
Go ahead.
This is the same thing we did on South Street when we began, when we were unable to fill details. The only other way to keep work, keep work going is to have flaggers. The flaggers get paid directly by the contractor, whereas the police details get paid out of, are, through payroll. So this, though it looks like an increasing cost, it's barely an increasing cost. The flaggers tend to, once they're paid prevailing wage and their, and their wages are marked up, tend to be just a little more expensive than, than our police on overtime rates. So, so there might be a very small increase by the end of the project, but but the hundred thousand dollars that we're proposing to use to pay them of chapter ninety is already part of that two hundred thousand dollars that was included for police details on this project. And every time a police detail is not, every time a flagger is used, it means a police detail is not being used. Shane, I asked Shane if he would be able to fill these, he could guarantee that he would fill these details. He cannot. He's going to try to get police on this project as much as possible because it is, I would say, more critical than South Street with the, with the school, the presence of the school there. But he did recommend that we proceed with a change order similar to what we did on South Street. So that's what I've brought here.
I'll go with Mr. Spleen first.
Through you to Matt. Matt, on that South Street project, do you know what the percentage of the time we used a flood law flagger was on that job site when Shane couldn't fill it?
No, I don't. They, after we put the change order in, they started filling more police details. But recently, in the past few months, I know they've been using flaggers much more. I don't think they can fill the details anymore. But no, I don't, I don't have that information off the top of my head.
You all set?
Yes, thank you.
Councilor Steve? I don't generally have a problem with doing to them flaggers, I'm perfect, I think we should do that as much as I can. But do you, how come, how come we're not using some of the, because we created all these traffic constables specifically for these people. And that, who are not police officers.
There's still a lot enough of them.
I mean, I thought, I didn't say we filled like twenty-five of them or something.
More than that.
Thirty-one, I think it was.
Yeah, it was, really large number, yeah.
Guess every town's having a problem getting details right now.
That, that's why we created the traffic constables, so locals can do it, so. We're on it.
They have full-time jobs too, though.
Yeah.
Hopefully you have someone on the fireman.
Alright. Okay, anybody else? Anybody else have anything? Town manager, do you want to say something? Got you. Alright. Okay, all those in favor? Item number twelve, discuss and vote on transferring money from the sale of the Wells Building Real Estate Project, number six five two two zero. Sale of real estate, balance in account of one million two hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred. The road paving construction reconstruction fund project number six four eight four three. Paid costs of paving railways throughout the town, construction, reconstruction roadways. I put a note on here, this agenda was postponed at the August eighteenth meeting to tonight's meeting. So could I have a motion?
Make the motion.
And then we'll have a discussion about it.
Yes, I agree.
Alright, thank you. As I was saying, I brought this back, was postponed at our last meeting. We did have a lot of discussion about possibly, and some of it was very good suggestions of possibly using some of that money on buildings, using some of it on sidewalks, using some of it on the roads as well. And it was a good suggestion, maybe you consider putting it, some of it into capital stabilization, I thought that was a pretty good idea as well, so. So we'll go around the room and have some discussion, councilor Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Spleen, to you. I think that money should go all the way to town hall. After we discussed it, we have the meeting, we walk outside, the bricks almost falling out, the roof leaking, either to put a bucket in there, chairman. No, I mean, we're in a bad shape here. We're waiting, we have a mold in the building, we have to tear it down. I think water is leaking everywhere, bricks gonna fall by the winter, fall on cars, on peoples. I think we should put all this money here and do one big project and done with it, like this, we know we have a good, a brain for the town of Southbridge. That's my opinion. That's what I'm gonna go to.
Mr. Spleen?
My thing is, I agree with what Council Dow is saying, but my thing is, is we have monies in account since two thousand sixteen, I think, we haven't even touched. Can we start touching it? I mean, there's money put aside, I don't know what dollar amounts are, but for a roof, handicap ramp, I mean, we just take it and we told them, the county don't do anything with it, we gotta start doing something with it. I don't know what.
If I can, if I could comment on that, the, the roofs, I think we have about thirty thousand dollars in there, nobody wants to touch it. If we have a architect look at this building holistically and bid it out to a general contractor, a general contractor will find somebody to fix that roof. We have ninety-something thousand for the ramp. If we're gonna rip out that ramp to take out the oil tank, we need to put a temporary handicap access at a different entrance. Ninety thousand dollars won't come close to covering it. And, and there's no time for anybody in the town to, to put specs together, plans and specs together on a, on a project like that. So I think we could look at transferring all those funds into an account along with this money and, and have a building committee such a, similar to the structure of the fire station building committee that goes out and finds an architect that can, that can put, put some plans and specs together to bid it out to a general contractor.
It's not about it.
Matt, I agree with what you're saying, but my thing is, we got money sitting, we have monies in the account that was approved by council in whatever it was, two thousand sixteen, two thousand eighteen. Let's do something with it. Let's go out, let's get it engineered, let's get something done. It's better than doing nothing, in my opinion. We're doing nothing, but the money's been, we approved the money, let's move on it. At least get the ball rolling. That's just my opinion.
The first step in that is hiring an architect and the amount of money that's available probably isn't, isn't adequate for that.
To design a handicap ramp? I mean, to, to.
If you're, if you're, if you wanna just attack the handicap ramp, then yes.
We gotta start somewhere, I guess, is my, is what I'm trying to say.
And what I'm saying is, I think the place to start is by hiring an architect to look at the entire building holistically and put together one set of plans and specs to go up to a general contractor and do everything as part of one project.
Okay.
Completely agree with that.
I'm gonna go with Mr. Lazo first.
Manager of the session. After the last meeting, I was outside with Chairman of the council and we were looking at the brick vacay on the building. On the side where everybody parks, it's bowing out. I wouldn't park my vehicle down there. It's gonna fall, it's gonna, when it starts going, the whole wall of the vacay is gonna come off. The roof, yes, I mean, some of the slates are missing and stuff like that, but I'm gonna say it needs to be repointed. Some of, some of the joints, there's no cement in them. If you walk around and look at this building, the, the brick vacay is falling apart. And if you don't do something about it soon, it'll be a lot more money. So I agree with everybody here.
Agreed.
If something has to be done, let's, let's start moving on it. Thank you.
I'm gonna, first I'm gonna go with, you know, town manager, and then I'll go with the staff. Councilor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair member of the subcommittee. I don't disagree, actually, Mr. DeJardin and I were talking about this the other day and he mentioned the idea of the architect and the GC because at different times, I've been asked questions by Council Steve and others about, you know, how best to approach this and we talked, I've talked with Mr. DeJardin's predecessor, that it's difficult to get certain contractors. So I, one of the reasons I talked to the chair and the council, the council chair and the council about getting this capital planning committee and call it a facilities management committee was so that we'd have additional set of eyes to look at some of these studies that we have and then take some of this money that's been sitting there, because we, the other night, Councilor Adam wrote about this. I had a gentleman who was in a wheelchair, I just happened to be out there, Ms. Doyle was there, Mr. Steve. He, you know, gave me an earful because he said he had trouble on the ramp and I told him we would look into it, so. I mean, some of these are overdue. We have a lot of projects going on, but perhaps the best plan actually, as Mr. DeJardin mentioned, is bundle these up, bid it out to a general contractor, they probably have a rolodex of people they can get for slate roofs, repointing some of the stained glass window issues, you know. Something rather than going out for individual RFPs, have one person come in, so. You know, I think it's worth looking into and consolidating some of those funds and then maybe putting it into the capital stabilization fund so we have a central pool of money to fund this project.
Alright, I'm gonna go with Councilor Lazo.
I agree to look at the town hall holistically. I think that Joe Dow was right, I've talked to Councilor Adams. But I do the point, it'll be three years before you see a piece of water work done. You go through the RFP and all the bidding, all we gotta go through. I firmly believe, go with whatever's fine, put the money, I wanted to take the money out of the building sales account and put it to work for the town of Southbridge. The one plan that this town has in place and on schedule is the road details, in the road plans. That's why I'm saying, take the one point two, put it into the roads, if you wanna put a little bit into the capital improvement, I agree. But the bottom line comes down to is, you're gonna put in another account, let it sit there till we get it all planned out and ready to be done. The town hall was reported in nineteen ninety, I was on a council let. They redid the slate roof, they redid the stained glass, they put the elevator in and the handicap ramp. You're talking early nineties, late eighties. The building has stood the test of time. And yes, I agree with all the previous speakers, by the time you get out of, out of the gate to do this, there is historical money grants, there's a lot of different other things that we can do while we're in the planning stage. I agree. But don't take that one point two, put it in the account to collect dust, just like we have it in now. Put it to work, we have a road plan, and our roads are falling apart, guys. Just like the building. If we had plans tomorrow with a general contractor ready to go, I'd say, okay, take the money, let's put it to work. This is what Southbridge does. It's not that they don't do anything, it just takes eight hundred years to do it. And, and that's why, right now, we're on a roll with the roads, we know which roads need to be done, and let's get them done. And you know, I, I just don't, it's very frustrating. I lived the restoration of the town hall. I lived it. Yeah, the planning and development, Matt is one hundred percent right. You should look at it holistically, put a building committee together and solve the problem. But that's gonna take time. In the meantime, it's gonna collect dust again.
Alright, I'm gonna go with, you all set?
Yep.
I'm gonna go with Councilor Adams.
Thank you, just to talk about what Kevin was saying about the multiple accounts, I did ask Karen to go ahead and review with the department heads, all those accounts that still have money. That's where we found like three, four hundred thousand dollars. In two thousand and eighteen, we first came across, so there, there are accounts that can be updated and also, they're still being utilized, whatever it may be, so that's one thing. Another thing is, we have a hundred twenty-four thousand dollars in sidewalk funds, correct?
Yeah.
So where's that? And then also, I would also say there's five hundred thousand dollars with the road issues from the one million that we talked about last time, so I'd like an answer on that. I'm not in disagreement with Councilor Lazo about helping with the roads, my concern is, what I saw the other day at that town, or the subcommittee, was what roads would you guys like to see done next? That's what got us in this first place. We have a plan, I'd like to stick to the plan, but if it's one point five that we keep allocating, use the one point five million dollars that we can allocate. I got inflation costs a little bit more to do less, I got that. But if we start doing this, like they, like I taught in two thousand and eighteen, this is how we figure out our roads, we're gonna be right back Hurt Locker like we were last time. So yeah, roads need to be done, we got that. But also, community center needs to get done, town hall needs to get done, and I understand, so there has to be a plan in place. My concern is, is like everybody else, I don't wanna lose that one point three million dollars when I don't run in a couple of years or whatever it may be, and then, you know, there's councils down the road go, hell, we found a one point three million dollars, where'd it go? So, you know, we gotta stay on top of that during the budget season and everything else. That's our responsibility as councils. Not so much always as department heads, but, you know, I'm, I'm all in favor, the, the town hall needs to be repointed, whatever it may be. Get an architect, which you need to do, and have a plan in place, just like we have for the roads. And I'd like to see that one hundred twenty-four thousand dollars contracted out to somebody utilizing the same type of payment plan that we have. Because you don't wanna tear up cement, put new cement in, and come out and find out in six months, they're cutting right through it again. Again, waste of taxpayer money. So that's all I've got to say, I mean, but I think it's wise to get it out of the building, throw it into capital, whatever we need to put it in, but keep a close eye on it.
Should we go back first on the answer?
Are we sure that that a hundred and twenty-four thousand is still available?
I don't know, it was brought up last meeting, you weren't here, that's why. That's all I'm asking for.
I heard it was brought up and we looked into it and the majority of that money has already been spent.
Okay.
To, to the best of my knowledge. So there's twenty-something or thirty-something thousand.
No, I don't, I don't believe it was spent, not all of it. I think some of it came back. There was some, I'll have to go back through my notes, it was a project that we were going to do, we didn't need it, so went back.
Let me continue real quick, this will be the town manager, what he decides to do on that with our recommendation, oh. But if you go back and those, you find those accounts from two thousand sixteen, seventeen all the way to twenty-two, whatever it may be that's not utilized, maybe it's a couple hundred thousand dollars, I can tell you, we cleaned out that pot and put in stabilization line. So take that and go, you know what, we earmark that for sidewalks, again, as we're going along. You know, it's a few hundred thousand dollars, we can get some done. I asked Mr. Lazo about, and maybe somebody else, how, how far can we go with those hundred and twenty thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars, funds for sidewalks today? Yeah, but it's a process that we had, I hate to do it without a plan. We don't do a plan, we're gonna be in the right, same place we were before. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Steve?
I actually agree, I'm pretty much completely with what Council Dow said earlier about putting a lot of that money toward this. I don't think we should put all of it there. But if we wanna go through the idea of doing some sort of a historical grants and stuff to help get some funding, we are almost certainly going to need some matching funds for it and those, those projects are extremely expensive. I mean, we've got, besides the stuff that we've already mentioned, we'll end up having to do some installation here, we'll have to completely revamp, we'll have to meet historical codes for the, for a lot of the, because this is a historical building. And those things just, they just jack up the costs. So we could probably, although I, I completely sympathize with what Councilor Lazo said about the road projects and all, all the roads that need to get done, and I agree, they do. I think that the town hall is also kind of the nerve center of our town. And it's an important circle building and we need to take care of it as much as we possibly can. I was thinking that, that at the very least, if we put some of this into the capital stabilization fund and, and we can, we may be able to use some small parts of it for some things. But I would like to see most of it stay there and be able to, at least until we have some idea how much this project will cost. Because it will cost a lot.
All right, you set?
Yeah.
Councilor Lazo?
The one word that I constantly hear from the state of Massachusetts and various other funding sources is shovel ready.
Yeah.
Okay. What do we have right now that's shovel ready, where you can get something done? Roads.
We're doing that.
Roads. If you took 200,000, you put it into the stabilization fund of capital and then put a million into roads, you've got seed money starting out on this project for the planning and development of it, getting the architect, going through the bids. I mean, I was chairman of the building committee for the New Middle High School and we did everything as planned, under budget, on time. And that's why when you do things, it's shovel ready. It's easy to say, I wanna do this. I agree with doing the town hall if it was shovel ready, but it's not. Councilors are gonna change, managers are gonna change, and then all of a sudden the problems connect. That's why the town hall hasn't been worked on. It was no plan. And I agree with Councilor Adams. Once that plan is in, I support a total renovation of the town hall. Thank you.
Councilor Dow first?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To you. When I came on the council, we want money to fix the A C. We don't wanna spend the citizen money in here. I can sweat. The town broke. We have no money.
It was not broke.
We, it's broke.
It's not broke.
We borrowed 10 million dollars, we're making a payment because we don't have money. We have 10 million dollars, we borrowed those money to make a payment on it because we don't have the money to fix the road. Cassella's leaving, we need to pick up the trash. We're trying to raise the fund on the citizen too, to get the tax on the houses to pick up their trash, correct? So our worry is to take those 1.2 million, put it right away when you think what is, we have half a million left from this year, we wasn't able to use it on a road. We have another project delayed till next year because they cannot catch up with it. So, that money's gonna go right to another account and sit over there too. There's no money that's gonna be used on a road, this year or next year probably, because we already have fund for that. This should be account saying, this is for the town hall. Nobody can use it, period. I agree with Matt. Take the half a million or 200, 300,000 we have already for the town hall, add it to 1.2, now we have money. We can go outside, get an engineer or architect, design and move forward. We have the money. And then we can look for the grant on historic building. But take that 1.2, use it on a road. Okay, well, we're gonna have money now to fix the town hall. No, that's not right. I think we should take those money, all of them, put them in a separate account for the town hall. Nobody allowed to touch them. Me and you here today, tomorrow now, when, who's coming after us? They're gonna do the same plan we do?
We don't have a plan.
How long you been in council, Mr. Councilor Lazo?
One year.
Before? All this year, where's the plan? All these, not your specific, all this council in the past, what plan they have? This is the only time, last three, four years, either before I come in, they have a plan for the road. They have money set up to take off from the marijuana, whatever, to go through the road. Before, nobody had a plan. The only thing, they go up there, fight ugly, who got bigger muscle, who got a high voice, and then they go home, I'm the hero. No, nothing was done in this town. That's it. Thank you.
Look. Historically, what the town of Salvage has done in the past, we've built schools, refurbished the town hall, we've done many, many things, but one thing that was always kicked down the road was the fire station. It's their time now and they take care of it. The town has always done something. The thing is, we finally have a plan on roads. I don't, we have a plan, it's shovel ready, let's use the money. When, when, when you have the plans ready for the town hall, we'll deal with it, we have a plan. Other than that, the money's still gonna collect dust, again, in another account. I think we have to attack it, but we have to do it through planning and development. And there's a lot of ways of getting money for your town hall when it's at the age that we are, historically. I mean, you're gonna have to go lean on banking as usual, what is out there? I mean, we can, if we can get grant money for a historical building, I mean, Councilor Adams brought up the honorary. It needs, it's not falling down, but it needs attention before it falls down. So we need plans on what we're gonna do with the honorary, with the town hall. But as long as it's in the planning stage and it's on the drawing board, life goes on, roads need to be fixed. That's why I'm saying go with the roads. Don't let the money collect dust. Let's make it happen.
All right.
Thank you.
I'll go with Councilor Adams.
Yeah, I would just, he said we're passionate, but I would say, just recommend and put this money into capital stabilization fund that we built for a reason, under infrastructure work. And then what we can do is, D W can turn around, the subcommittee can turn around saying, what we would like to do is recommend within that infrastructure project, as we're moving along, let's just say we put some money here for roads or whatever it may be. This money's gonna be for the town hall, this money's gonna be, or maybe buildings, whatever it may be, and utilize it that way. Just a step-by-step process. First time we've been able to have some of this cash on hand, all of a sudden, what do we do with it? I'm worried that we'll spend it all in one spot, but at the same time, you know, we needed it in different locations and, and roads is one of them. So is the, the buildings. Just put, just adopt it and send it into the capital stabilization fund. For right now, and then bring it back upon your agendas as we go along.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dow?
I don't know if I missed something, but don't we have a bunch of ARPA funds? Couldn't we apply to that?
We do, we're using.
I mean.
That is another source.
That's a really important thing. I mean, talk about revitalizing, isn't that the R, our town?
And ARPA money can be used for infrastructure.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That's a great use.
All right, so are you all set? I'm sorry. You all set? All right. So, what's the committee's pleasure? I don't have a problem with Councilor Adams' suggestion, put it in capital stabilization, use it from there for roads, building, whatever we need it for. If that's, in my opinion, if he's going to support that and we can get the full council to support that, whereas I don't know if we can get the full council to support this, then I think that's probably the way we should go with it.
I think working with both of the town managers, his idea and how it's gonna go about doing it along with the subcommittee and trying to figure that out and start that up.
All right, Mr. Shemmy, you have the comment?
Nothing prevents you from moving forward to going out for an RFP for design or whatever, for the architect to look at the building. Nothing prevents you from doing that.
That's true.
You don't need that money. You go for the RFP, you're gonna get an idea what it costs, then you move to council again.
That's true.
The roads.
If I'm, oh, sorry, I don't want to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
I just.
But, I mean, nothing prevents you from going forward. You, you have to find the money to do that when you do the RFP. For architect or architectural services.
So, architects aren't, aren't procured by RFP, they're procured by RFQ.
Okay.
So you request qualifications from them, but you set the fee.
Correct.
So we won't be getting the fee from the architects. We'll be getting, we'll be setting the fee ahead of time.
But you'll know what that is.
I like the way that works.
Right, but you'll know what that is.
Yeah, you'll have to figure it out.
As far as the roads, you're spending, you, you didn't spend 1.5 million dollars this year. You spent 1 million dollars and then you took some of that rock money or whatever you call it and put it towards the road. You never went for the 1.5 billion that you said you're gonna do every year. I don't even know if it was a loan. I don't believe it was a loan that you're paying on that 1.5. I believe it's part of the operating, general operating budget of the town. I could be wrong, manager would know that better. But you, you've deviated from the road plan that's already out there, you've deviated it every year, and I'll give you an example. Go for the road. It's off, it's off the picture. And that was in the road, roads management plan. So you could, you could take that 1.2 million dollars, even just 1 million dollars, and work on the roads and see it. I mean, this year, nothing against Mr. Piapi, but we're not gonna see no paving probably done with that money until next spring. And, and that's probably good construction, instead of getting into a mess like we have on Main Street. But you take the 1 million dollars or whatever and, and you fix the roads. As I said last week at the meeting, schools are affected by what's going on. But the roads are affected by every single person in this community and every single person that comes and visits this community. And that's all you hear is about how bad the roads are. And like I say, 1.1, just about a million dollars this year, and then with the additional money that came from the snow, you didn't even do the 1.5 like you said you were gonna do every year. So, I mean, take the money, still go with the RFQ. At least when that is done, you're gonna know how much you're gonna need. And then appropriate the money somehow. If you, if you need to bond that or you take it out of the stabilization fund, it'd probably be good use. But at least you're getting what affects people's lives every single day. And, and I, I understand, this building isn't gonna be fixed for 1.2 million dollars. You think it is? Wrong. This building's gonna probably be in the same 10 million dollar range to fix this building. I mean, you look up at the roof where the lightning struck many years ago and it's starting to fall apart over there, up on the tower, you know? I was here when they did this whole roof over. This, this community has done its thing, as each year it needs it. The fire station, we knew a new building was coming, but they put the roof on and fixed the roof when Dickie Chesler was, was chief. And there's no maintenance of it done. Let the, let the roofing shingles fall off because we're gonna build a new fire station, you know, those kind of things. That's where shame on us. Even though it's old, even though it's gonna be replaced, things like that still needs to be repaired. That's what we're gonna work on here. Nothing stops you from going out and saying, okay, this is what we're gonna do. You know how much it's gonna cost you, you know this project's gonna be a bomb. You know that. And, and the 1.2 million dollars isn't even gonna come close of fixing anything here.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Dow?
Thank you. Not only is also the road is bad, every, every time you drive, people working, utility working, company working, town do the same plan. Some of them had a bus, a lot of it, we, we just delayed. But you just say, half a million dollar wasn't able to use it this year, so we're gonna take the 1.
Well, it wasn't appropriated this year. Big difference.
So we're gonna take another 1.2 and put it there?
Yeah, fix the road. Go drive Dudley, go drive Chopton, go drive Savage. The roads are 100% better now.
Just recently, recently, because they have a plan.
They're better.
And they follow their plan.
Yeah, they, they follow the plan, they put money on it.
We have the money, that's why we borrowed the money to do the plan.
They didn't borrow the money.
Okay. I think I vote on it, so I don't know if you vote on it.
All right, so what is, what is the committee's pleasure? What would you like to do? Would you like to send this to the roads? Would you like to send it to capital stabilization, or do you wanna leave it alone? No. Since there was. I would like to go to the roads, but we have to be pragmatic. What is the councils gonna want to do with it?
Well, I think, I think part of it is, a lot, I mean, I think we all want to see the roads get done. But the catch is, at the moment, we have a bunch of road projects that are currently being done that we haven't had yet a chance to see them completed. And we already have road projects that are in the works, in the planning stages, that won't even break ground for another year and a half. We've got that giant tip project right in the middle of downtown. That's not gonna happen till 2024.
Okay, but that's not the road construction project.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying that what we're, but that all of the projects that are in process or will be in process in one form or another in the next few years will make a huge difference to, I, I, I hope that they make a huge difference to the, the perception that everybody is concerned about the roads being in terrible shape. I hope it will, you know? And I saw, I saw Kevin's reaction this second ago, you know? So it's, it's a, it's a situation where we have, we're climbing uphill, and I understand that. And there's a lot of work that needs to get done on our roads, there's no doubt about it. I think a lot of the projects that we have going will make a huge difference. I wanna really see what they do and how much interest they make. I could see maybe putting some of the money towards roads, but as I said, we also have the other major infrastructure issues in town buildings. And I agree, as I said, I agree with Councilor Dow, that a large sum of the money should go toward that because we're gonna need that going forward. I, and the catch is, of course, if we do not have a, a, a source of funds that we have ready to put towards some of these major projects, just the only other way to do it, unfortunately, is taxes. I mean, we will be doing research on grants and that's a big, that makes a big difference. I don't know, for example, like the historical grants, whether they will cover the level of cost that this project would have. Maybe it would. I don't know, I was just scanning through a list of them and the list of the projects that they, at least that particular Mass Historical Society projects fund, almost all of their grants were 50,000 dollars, which isn't anywhere close to this project. They may have much larger projects that I wasn't looking at. I hope they do. Because I believe that the Oxford Library did a significantly larger project, but it wasn't the multi-million dollar project. It was, I think, I wanna say it was somewhere in the 400,000 range.
Okay.
Which is, which is a step in the right direction. So, but we really need to know with RFQs what it would cost to do this work right. And, and I agree with Matt that, that, you know, going after an architect that can do the job right will be more than we have in some of those other smaller funds that we've been sitting around for a while. I would, I would, I think I would make a motion that we, for the moment, that we put this in capital stabilization.
Second.
Okay, motion was made in second. Councilor Lazo or Mr. Lazo?
I'm torn between the building and the roads because I have followed the roads too. I mean, if we could go out and look for funding for, from historical, you know, vending and stuff like that for this building, I, I would say, yeah. I've, I've got a big problem with the roads. I drive them every day.
Oh, yes.
And I know Mr. Dow likes the roads the way they are because he makes good money on the front end.
I love you, Joe, you know that.
So anyways, I, I wanna say I would like to leave it.
Bill is not pay yet.
Leave it the way it is to go through the roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't think we have time to look for plan two, three years down the road because one of the brick or one of the roof, it's gonna fall on somebody's head and kill them. And then we're in a big trouble. And then what we do after? We move faster? I think we need to start, regardless of if it's architectural or not. I agree with Mr. Lazo, is brick falling down? The joint need to be repaired ASAP before the water go behind those bricks and what happened in the church in Charlton Street, it's gonna happen here in the town. Plus, you can see roof already falling out. So I don't see no time for that. If we don't move ASAP, good luck. And then the water going down inside the town hall up there where we meet, that's mold. And then one year later, you're not gonna be meeting there because it's mold. Now you're gonna tear the building down. That's it. Do whatever you want after that.
All right, hold on. Councilor Lazo?
Joe Dow is 100% right. Don't make any misunderstanding of what I'm saying. Money collecting dust is what aggravated it to this point of bringing it forward. Whether it ends up in the general fund or this fund or that fund, Joe Dow is right. You look at the fire station, the old fire station. I know we're building a new fire station, but the archway needs to be repointed. You're not talking about millions of dollars. You're talking about light masonry repairs and repairs to something so a slate doesn't fall through. That's just general maintenance to hold the building together for a bigger project later. He's right. You do nothing is not an option. You have to do something to secure the building while we're using it. And then at some point, I don't think 2 million dollars is gonna make a dent in the project that we have to do here. But I think we, it's like a twofold. We have to still maintain the buildings, like when we built the middle high school. We still maintained Salvage Drive in the middle school until that building was fully operative. Thank you.
Gus kinda brought up that there are a lot of projects going on and, I mean, I'm, oh, I don't, nobody's brought up the elephant in the room here that I'm leaving in a few weeks. And I'm not exactly sure what, who, I'm not sure what it will look like restaffing the department. There, we're currently at least three people, three positions down after my exit. Uh, there, we're currently at least three people, three positions down after my exit. And there are at least two other positions that I think should be created and filled. Uh, another engineering position and a, a facilities manager. And if you bring in one person and put, hey, okay, you have South Street currently under construction. You have West Street currently under construction. You have Road Improvements 2022 currently under construction. You have Crane and River in design. You have East Main Street in design. You have the tip project in design. You have two bridge projects in design. I don't know how you can put, uh, how you can expect them to take on additional road projects and succeed. You are, you set me up to fail, and you're setting whoever comes in up to fail.
All right. Thank you. So, I believe Counselor Steve, your motion was an amendment, correct?
No, we didn't have, we didn't have a motion.
Did I have a motion? I thought we did.
He did, he did motion as second.
Yeah, we, I did motion as second, but we did not have a motion for previous.
I thought we did.
No.
I put it all in capital boom, all right?
We're gonna put it, your, your motion is to put it all into capital stabilization. Capital stabilization account. That's your motion.
Yep.
And I, I believe that Counselor Adams, you're in favor of that, putting it into capital. So we would, we would expect you to support that at the council meeting.
Is that Cameron? I'm in favor.
What's wrong with asking that question?
I'm kidding, man, I'm kidding. I think that it's on, Jesus. I would recommend, though, Mr. Chair, you put it under infrastructure, period.
Capital stabilization.
Under an account with infrastructure all.
That's what capital stabilization is.
Capital stabilization.
No, it's not.
It was not, you might buy a truck if you want with that money.
That's what it's for.
Or whatever.
So we're gonna create a comp with him capital stabil?
So withdraw, withdraw your motion, and do another motion under.
The manager's got something, she's probably smarter than that.
If it's in capital stabilization, you're still gonna need two-thirds. So you're gonna have to have significant support before you're taking it out. So it's a question of infrastructure. It's capital.
I would also like to hear from the council chairman on this one. How you feel about it?
I'm torn, uh, between the roads and the building. I'm afraid that if we go too long with the town hall, we'll end up in the same mess that we had with the fire station.
Exactly.
I, I got a very good education from citizen members Splain and Lozo. Um, after a meeting last week or the week before. And they pointed out a lot of things about the building that were going on, uh, that, that I wouldn't know about. They're the professionals, I'm not. Uh, but it was quite an education. I'd like the money put aside for infrastructure. And I like the idea of, of, um, getting an architect on RFQ. Uh, to look at the building and see what needs to be done. Counselor Dow was right, last year, year and a half ago, we looked at eventually air conditioning in the council chambers. Uh, cable people have told me that it's difficult, if not impossible, to move a council meeting to another, uh, building and get set up. And do the taking that, that they do. Uh, so we're kinda wedded to the McKinnon Council Chambers, which is a nice area. I have no problem with that. So I'd like, I, if I were a voting member of the, of the council, of the committee. I would vote in favor of, uh, the motion as it stated. I will definitely support this if it comes up to council. Uh, but I, I think the only caveat is, and I'm not trying to be funny. But I think of the, of the kid that goes to the circus and has a little bit of everything from the concessions. And ends up with a sore stomach. In that, uh, Matt's correct. We've done a lot of road projects, and we're talking about a lot more. There'll, there'll definitely be, in the next fiscal year, uh, more road program work that needs to be done. Some of this money, I think, can be used for, uh, change orders that may be coming down the road. But I think that we, we need to keep an eye on this building. I know that the, that the community certainly needs work. I get that. But it would be a shame, it would be an absolute shame to see this building fall into disrepair. And I think we need, uh, to take care of it. So, um, I'm happy with moving the money into capital stabilization. Uh, however, I think we need to move forward on beginning the process of taking care of this building.
All right. Thank you very much. Does anybody else have anything to say on this motion to move this money from the sale of the Wells Building, real estate project number 65220, to capital stabilization account? And I don't have that account.
Infrastructure.
I don't have that account number in my head, the capital stabilization.
Just listed, and when it goes to council, they were the manageable.
We'll take a little, put a proper account.
Does it have to say infrastructure?
No.
There's only one capital stabilization account.
Yeah, you can take that. You don't have to know.
Takes two-thirds. All right, I think we've talked it, talked to death here, all those in favor? All those opposed? Uh, agenda item number 13, discuss road construction projects updates. Ellis Road, North and Mechanic Street, and Main Street. I think we have pretty much, oh, I'm sorry, did I miss something?
No, I'm, I'm, you're saying. No, my hand was, when you said, I think we pretty much have, yeah, we've talked about all of them.
Yeah, I think we have talked about all these roads. Have you seen, have you had anything more to say about them? We've talked about them all already, so do you wanna just skip over this one? I think we've.
Yeah.
Do you have the potholes on Main Street fixed?
How is it on Main Street?
We've asked like.
Yeah, we haven't done.
We've asked like three times already. One on corner, and center, and one by the post office.
Um, so the, uh, the Main Street. We did get a, a counter from, um, from Lynch. Which was basically the, their original proposal, plus our minor punch list items. Um, I wish I had had a chance to, uh, to catch up with VHB. I'm not sure where that stands. If you have any update on that, beyond that?
I, I'm talking to our engineer very briefly last week about a couple of issues. About, in light of mass departure, what, what to do, a few of these things. But we didn't get into the substance of where that is. I think he wrote a letter back to, um, and we're still waiting, you know, just for yet another response. Because we have a, Matt, our engineer, VHB, and I had talked about what we think needs to be done. And we were trying to see if Pat are getting, um, paving done the way we want. I mean, I think it's the top of the hill right about where Notre Dame is, down to Everett Street.
It waits, not all of it.
So that's been the position we've taken.
We walked it.
So that pretty much is the same answer, but we got the last three meetings. Or since, since we did the walk, that's the same answer, we're still discussing.
I think Lynch was out here today with three people.
Please, would you tell me?
I can only get availability from all individuals, maybe once a week or so. We talk, send something over, it takes them a week or two to respond.
Okay.
I mean, you know, the last one came from their attorney. So the next stop, potentially, is, you know, we have to get our council as well.
All right. Okay. Anything else?
I, I'd just like an answer on my potholes.
Potholes?
Can we at least do it in-house? I think Heather's called twice.
Sure. Oh, I can, uh.
I mean, I know you're short, but.
Yep, I'll have her guys fill.
You know which ones I'm talking about? Central Street, invited post office?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, central and ever, are there any others that you?
The bad ones, the Central Street and Everett.
These, these are potholes that are in the pavement that Lynch just put down.
Yes, yeah.
It's in the cobble.
Which of course should not happen.
No.
Thank you, Matt.
All right, thank you. Agenda item number 14, discuss town's top management road improvement plan for 2022. Propose to be ruled by a nine to nothing vote at the January 14, 2021 town council meeting, agenda item number 20. Uh, the reason I put this on there is because this year, as has been mentioned, we really haven't done anything. And I know we were supposed to have, you had put forward a 10 million dollar plan. 1.5 million every year. As Mr. Shenier has pointed out, we haven't even spent a million this year. So what's going on with the other half a million? What's going on with construction, really? We haven't done anything this year. As far as I can tell, we haven't done anything.
I mean, all I can do is ask for Mr. DeJardin to comment, because what, what it transpired the year before. Um, we followed the best first approach. Um, I've worked out some streets with then DPW director, Ms. Belakely. Um, as you know, she's been a lot of the here. There's some streets put into play at the beginning, I wanna say this year, that would be on that list. In, in addition to not only, um, repairing, but, um, seals coating, crack filling, fog sealing is what I'm gonna say. I can't comment any more than that, other than, you know, I rely on my staff. But you heard from Mr. DeJardin earlier, we're down people over there. I, in about, less than three weeks, I believe I'm gonna be without any management whatsoever. So I'm, I am now spending a significant amount of my time, and this is gonna go to your other discussion points. I'm spending about half of my week interviewing about the 18 open positions here. I'm trying to figure out, because there's nobody to help me with any of the procurements anymore, because I rely on DPW and some of the others. How I'm gonna do all these procurements for curbside, this, getting engineering services to fill in. Because those positions, including the DPW director, have been open for four months. And I have a panel of current former DPW directors that are willing to help out and vet these people. But I haven't really had anybody who meets the minimum qualifications for the position. So this is not unique to South Bridge, but because of a couple of incidents that have happened of late. I'm talking to my peers, it's getting harder and harder to get people. So I'm not sure how we're gonna get much more done as to what Mr. DeJardin said earlier, if we don't have staff. Because I have to find oversight for all these existing projects. So I don't know how I'm gonna put more paving on anybody's plate. And, and that's just the reality of it. So I, I think it's gonna be coming down to expectations, and so we get fully staffed a lot of areas. Because I still don't have a building commissioner, I don't have a health director, I don't have a treasurer collective. We're trying to get interns in all these places. And in the meantime, all of those problems are being funneled to me. Because the, the council said, well, how do I get inspections? I don't have people. I can get part-time people, I'm trying to get interns. I have had secured interns in some of these positions. And based on what's been going on, current events, some of them have changed their minds about coming to work. So, um, that's all I can tell you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tom Adra. One of the reasons I put this on there, because the plan for the roads started way back in March. When you didn't have these problems. We had a DPW director, we had an assistant DPW director, and yet there was no plans to do the roads. But that was my only concern. We had, the year before, we had cracked ceiling, we had fog ceiling, we had micro-surfacing. We had all those things. But then this year, it just seemed like we didn't have anything in the works. I realized.
Uh, Matt's right here.
I realized, hold on, I realized the problems that you're having now. But it just didn't seem like there was anything set up for this year. That was my only concern.
I, I.
Matt, go ahead.
I don't even know what we're talking about here. This, this item here, the town manager's road improvement plan for 2022. Which was approved by a nine to zero vote at the January 14, 2021 town council meeting? I look back at that, that was just a presentation by him about, uh, the, the, uh, the best first. And our kind of overall overarching plan. There was no vote there. The road improvement plan for 2022 turned into the project that Mr. Piapi's working on right now. Which is a million dollar project. How can you say that we're not doing any road work right now? I, I, you're, you're completely, I'm completely baffled as to this. Three years ago, we started this, uh, we started, uh, funding, actually funding roads. Uh, to, the best of my knowledge, it's never been one and a half million dollars a year, it's been 1 million dollars a year. I may be wrong on the first year or two of that, but the first year of that, we did, uh, we did Brentwood, we did Marsh, we did Prospect. And we did, uh, some, um, pavement preservation techniques. The second, uh, we did Millen overlay to match up to national, a bunch of National Grid trenches, uh, High Street area, and some other areas. And we did micro-surfacing, we did crack ceiling, we did fog ceiling. This year, I gave a list of, of projects to you guys. It included Millen overlay projects, it included full depth reclamation projects, it included pavement preservation projects. And you picked the projects that you picked. And, and Mr. Piapi won that bid. I don't know how, what, what we're, we're not doing.
Okay. You ready? I'm gonna let Mr. Piapi go.
I have a comment as a contractor and a citizen. He, he's absolutely right. The other thing is, you gotta, you gotta slow down when you do some of this stuff, right? I mean, it's out of control. I mean, to be perfectly honest with you, all these projects could be done better. With levels on South Street, there's tons of road improvement. That, you know, you have to realize, we have a DPW that became, that got totally away from road work. Okay, so we have no one there with really any knowledge. Okay, you know, most highway departments have like a highway superintendent that, and you guys talk about these rural improvements. That shows up and shows that he cares and concerns about the roads. That's way better than any regulations. That fell apart, because we, we put an emphasis on empty trash cans at the library, and cutting grass on the farm. And that's why the roads are in the condition we have. And if, you have, we have all this money, money to spend, we have an ethical obligation to spend it well. It's, it's out of control. Exactly, you've gotta slow down and like, do some of the stuff, right? That's my point about Ellis Road. We gotta figure this out and spend the money ethically. I mean, I mean, South Street is, like, you guys don't understand this stuff, but it's like ridiculous to do.
I agree.
You spend the money where you shouldn't and not where you should.
South Street was not part of the road improvement plan. But I would like to just point out that at the January 14 meeting, which I have on here. The town manager did make a presentation, that pavement management plan to the town council. That was agenda item 19. Agenda item number 20, the council voted to approve that the town appropriate 10 million dollars to pay costs of paving roadways throughout the town, constructing and reconstructing roadways. Additional description, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto. And that to lead this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of town manager is authorized to borrow the money. And we voted on that by a nine to zero vote. And the plan was 1.5 million dollars per year on road improvement projects in town. The first year, we did, not only did we do Millen overlay, we also did fog ceiling, crack ceiling, micro-surfacing. This year.
That was the second year.
2021, we did that. And this year, we're, we're doing the projects that we asked to do, but we are a half a million short of our goal of 1.5 million.
People, you have to have the right people.
And we had the right people in March.
We don't have them now.
We don't have them now. Hold on, one at a time. I'll go with Counselor Lozlo.
Which one's the road expert that we have? Heather? Him? The road experts? We refuse to hire road experts. Not even to his assistant. He told me you were concentrating too much on construction. That's because you're supposed to pay attention to the construction. We don't have that road superintendent that he talks about, or a road expert in DPW. We got a lot of guys trimming trees, cutting blocks, doing a lot of work in DPW. There were a lot of workers. But the bottom line comes out, was for the first time in a long time, the town stepped up on roads. And when we started doing the roads, there were a lot of mistakes due to the lack of foresight. Prior flooding prevents something performance.
Some just experiments, too. I mean, you know, a lot of this stuff's developed, most towns have put work up, some of the work up for the annual contract unit prices. So contractors work with road crews, supplemented, the guys get a lot of experience. Some bridges refused to do that for forever. I advocated for it for 15 years, and no one would ever do it. I mean, so the smaller projects could get done that way, administered by some of the people. But you need a guy like him, you know, it takes experienced people, boots on the ground. But you gotta have a guy like him figuring out the numbers. I mean, it, it takes a team. You can't, like, he, it, it's impossible, like, you don't know what you're asking. Like, I mean, it's not.
Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't wanna put the finger on anybody except the council. Because every time the DPW come in, be fun about, I need help. I need more people. I need more, uh, support. No, 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 do what you have. She have nine guys, half of them retired, and her and Matt working, day and night, try to catch up. And we say, no, we don't have money for you. No, you can't hire somebody. No, we need, no, that's not right to put the finger on them. They're working so hard, they can do so much, they're human, they're a human. I don't believe we should put the finger on anyone. We should put finger on us. We don't hire people to help them. Thank you.
Matt, did you want to respond?
I forgot what my. The problem with going out for an annual contract is that the town council demands that they are the ones to decide what roads, roads to do. If you gave latitude to the DPW director to choose based on the pavement management plan that we have in place, then it would be possible to, it would open the doors for a lot of other ways to structure contracts. Sure.
Alright, thank you, Town Manager.
Going back to the fall of 2020, when we talked about the pavement management plan. At that point in time, that 1.5 million dollar number was based on an estimate of what was projected by the then for host community agreement holders, estimated revenue coming in. And to date, there's only one who's really delivering on those estimates. And they've since been revised that going forward are not going to skyrocket like they once anticipated. We have one that still has not done anything. We've looked at what we can do with that, you know, that, they're still sitting there. We have one that is yet to open. We have one that's opened within the last year. But I don't think that they're generating, based on my last correspondence, the numbers they thought. So, you know, I don't know if it's prudent to be doing 1.5 million every year, even though we're bonding it. If what we, we said at the time is we were going to be able to offset that, we were going to, you know, increase the impact on the levy, bonding this amount of money, anticipating that we're getting those types of revenues. So there is, you know, we often talk about, you know, the burden on the taxpayers. If we're not getting that revenue, we are going to have to make it elsewhere. So we have to factor that in as we go forward in the amount of projects we do each year. So we're going to have to look for alternative revenue sources because these, it's not they have been dried up, they never really came to fruition as was intended. We're still down, like I said, one should come on, we're hoping by the end of this year. But that's still three out of the four. And so if they had each projected, you know, about 300,000 a year, and we're only getting about, you know, less than half of that.
You talking about the marijuana mine?
Yes. So, I'm sorry, I forgot to say that. But that was the projection of the revenue we were getting from those host community agreements. And it hasn't played out like they all anticipated.
Okay. Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just real quick, a cracked ceiling started off in the springtime. It worked its way all the way through the town where it needed to go. So I could see that, I mean, they were out there right early and ready to go. And they, they worked their way through miles of it. I agree, you know, DPW is in a bad way right now. And a lot of holes need to be filled up with experienced individuals and, you know. To understand, I want to know where that half a million dollars was at. But I also understand, you have to adjust fire almost in a while when there's lack of, you know, personnel, equipment, supplies and all that kind of stuff. So that's common sense in our operational field. So, you know, I think at this point in time, I mean, we approved those roads for this year. We've changed some of it this evening. So I, you know, I think we're doing, it took decades for these roads to get the way they're going. They are. It's going to take time to get them where they need to be. But right now, every, every town is hurting for personnel, applying for certain jobs, all the way through. And you know, if the town manager comes up with a strategic plan with engineers or whatever it may be, we need to do our best to be able to support that because we need those people in that DPW right now, just like we need the police for that, we provided that. The fire department, we provided that. DPW needs them too. And I'm in agreement, cutting trees, that's great, you got public works and all that kind of stuff. You also need street people out there, working, you know, they're the grunts of the job.
You know, I've got to be honest with you. I'm here trying to assess whether I want to start this work because it is a lot of decisions to make on a job like that. I have to get approval of pay items and quantities. I need a guy like him that I can work with to do it, and I'm not going to have one. You guys want to start a million dollar job that's bonded, that ties up everything you have and you're unclear on the oversight? And Ellis Road is, in particular, is like remodeling an old house, there's 10 million judgment calls to make. And you have to have an interface between the funds and quality and everything else. And it's a big balance act, and who, who, who am I going to do that? I do it every day, every day in the towns we work for with people we've developed relationships with and have confidence with, and he leaves and I have this big unknown. There's not one person down there that has a clue.
Well, you're going to have to work with the town manager until we get somebody.
Except he, in defense of him, he's not a road guy.
I know.
So I mean.
Can we get a road guy?
And I'm not a health director, I'm not a building commissioner, I'm not a treasurer. But you know what, I'm having a learning. It's taking a lot of time away from the other things that we need to accomplish here too. So I mean, I get it, there's a little levity in here, but, you know, we are down quite a few people and there are a lot of important decisions. And I'm trying to scramble, as I said, the unfortunate part, and I'm trying to get some questions answered from our town council and the inspectors general, is you have to procure a lot of these things. Yes, I can get engineering services without them, but you still have to use some reasonable practices to solicit, you know, quotes and qualifications. But again, you know, if we're spending an ordinary amount of time going through interviews and, you know, some of the conversations we've had here have been productive, but I don't need to be at all these meetings if I need to be trying to work on some of this stuff. I'm just trying to be pragmatic. We can't stretch ourselves too thin if we're going to try and get these people and get people in as quickly as possible. I mean, I don't want any of this stuff to fall behind, but there's, there's only a handful of us that can cover all this at the moment.
Alright, thank you.
Very true.
Southbridge has to stop driving people out the door. I mean, it just has to, like, that's the future, young guy like that's the future. Okay, he's not perfect, okay, he's experienced, he should stay. We should be ashamed of ourselves.
And I don't, I don't exactly know what you mean, like, Southbridge is driving him out the door. How long, it's Matt, how long are you staying?
The 21st is my last day.
21st, so.
You guys have to stop right from managing.
You can get together with him.
I know, but until we start the job, until we open up the ground, I need it.
And I've got a lot of work to do, just writing notes and everything for, to hand off to an unknown person in the future on every project that we're working on, every, every facility, every.
Okay.
I mean, we have to start, we have to start, to do the job right, for instance, we have to start with cutting four times the trees that we need to. Somebody has to prove that, that's step one, that missed on South Street. South Street is, that, that mess, it's like, I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not going to the job that bold. So who's going to prove that?
Okay. Well, I know that when it came to us for a vote, nobody came to us and said, hey, we have more trees than we thought, so.
No, well, it's, I mean, as we, you know, first of all, we have to get the job, then we look at the job. Takes a, this stuff all comes to light, you know, it's typical. But I mean, it'd be no problem if he wasn't leaving, but.
Okay. Alright, then we're going to go. Unless anybody has anything else? Agenda item number 15, what is the status of hiring of a DPW director? Have you gotten anybody applying for the job? That's all I think I wanted to know. No one? No one's applying?
No one's applying for the position I'm hosting in numerous places. Well, there's people that have applied that are qualified for the DPW director position.
Yeah.
As the job description stands. Because you need like a PE and there's other certifications that are required.
Alright.
No, that's for the town assistant, um, engineer that that was on.
PE has been.
That's been, that was for a long time.
Yeah, I believe the PE requirement was waived in order to hire Heather as the director.
The director, okay, then there's other.
Well, she had it in New York, which is. She was, she should have been.
I wasn't aware of that, but all the, all the, all the, all the applications that have been submitted have been reviewed by all of us. So just everybody else, there's been more than one, one set of eyes on the resumes.
Any questions?
So, so with the PE being scratched from that, are there any qualified people that are applied?
There's one gentleman, that's from Rhode Island, but he doesn't have the Massachusetts licenses. So do you need them? He's a DPW director from Rhode Island. But that you need in Massachusetts, based on the job description, you need Massachusetts.
I'm a current engineer.
Yeah. Mr. Splay?
No.
Go ahead, alright. Anybody else? Alright, just wanted an update on, thank you very much. And also the status of hiring a town engineer assistant. Are we going forward with that this year? Are we not going forward with that?
So, as the charter states, I make an appointment based on the recommendation of the DPW director. And when Mr. Jarden resigned, he said that he did not feel comfortable making any appointments on the way out the door because whoever came in to become the DPW director or a new engineer, they are going to be good people to work with that individual. And he thought it would be prudent as we hold on.
Anybody, anybody else?
Yeah, ready?
Go ahead, Mr. Lavo.
I have a problem with waiting, okay? We were ready to appoint a gentleman, that the whole council voted not to hire for whatever reasons. Whether you like the process or not, that's what happened. We have overqualified people sitting here that actually have road experience, and we're going to wait. And no offense to you, Matt, you're leaving, have a nice ride, going to the village, and you [BLEEP] the way out. We need to move forward. This, oh, that's, that's professional. And break that finger up. But anyways.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to calm it down, I will lie, take it easy. Councilor Lazo, just keep the personality out of this, please.
It's not a personality thing, it's a sit and wait thing again. Every vacancy we have, we sit and wait, and we wait. And we wait for something to happen, like a guy on a white horse to come let in, in St. Southbridge. We need to move forward on these things. If we can appoint one person that knows anything about roads at this point, I would be willing to take that chance because they do know roads. We're just listening about road superintendents. Now, we have a full staff. And I did our council and I saw what happened at Central Street parking lot. I saw what happened to Main Street. I saw what happened to Page Hill. I saw what happened to Good Leaf River Road. And now you're going to tell me that a gentleman is going to recommend the, oh, you guys wait until you get your DPW director, which we seem to have a problem, okay? So we're going to sit and wait, so we're going to make the problem bigger times two. So for me, I'm sitting here going, you know, in the private sector, you don't sit and wait. You get things done, and that's why I'm sitting here. Nothing against anybody in the room, but the bottom line is, there's a cemetery full of people that thought the world couldn't live without them. And that goes to people, they want to leave, they can leave, I wish them the best of luck. I have to stay here, live in Southbridge, and bear the sword, and then work towards getting other people in. But you know, it just doesn't seem to work as far as putting people forward. Your bottom line is, you might even somebody be telling you.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Alright. Anybody else, Councilor?
I think you should, and those discussions should be in private.
I'm not so sure.
We should have a town council and a town manager in a private and discuss those stuff.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything? No?
Thank you, Chair.
Oh, thank you, Dan.